Okay, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the Central Jury Room in the Justice Center at 1200 Laurel Street. Would everybody stand for the end of the question, please?
Good morning, Judge. I want to thank you for this wonderful day. Lord, we thank you for your kindness, your forgiveness, Lord, for your understanding in our lives. I just praise you today for the beautiful sunshine and the cool weather. Lord, I ask that today, as we do the business of the county, that you would speak to us and we would use wisdom in all the choices that we make. We thank you, Lord, for our county, for all the people that serve and have given, Lord, we pray for them, ask for your blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Judge Joe, would you like to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
Joe, would you like to pledge a text?
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas on one state under God, one and indivisible.
This morning, we have any special presentations, both? Not anything? Does any citizen, I have one person's already signed up, but does any citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda item? If they do, the sheriff has some forms. Anyone? Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Rome. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Next is subdivision roads and plants. Mr. Lenny?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner. The first one is under road operations. Discuss and take appropriate action when accepting the follow dedicated roadway for possible maintenance onto the county road system. It's Caigga Road from Carter Road to Resort Drive with a length of 4,105 feet. Commissioner Rome had asked to place this on the agenda for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Berman, do you want to come and speak or not?
I'd read the text along.
Or do you just want me to read it?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, it requires me to read this.
Okay, he has got a vote for doing this. Commissioner Rome, you want to...
Yeah, the Caigga Road, unlike many of the roads we've taken in, Judge, in the past in the county, these folks out there collectively have spent well over $100,000 just since '09 doing their own repairs on this road. The road is extensively used because it's an access to the lake. Dead ends on a road that were ending this take-in on that dead end, dead end on the road of the long way. Caigga has a lot of people down there, a lot of traffic. There's also a legitimate daycare business there that has traffic in and out each day with children. There's extensive use because of the number of people who have age down there, ambulances, school buses, there's all kinds of traffic. So it's, I think it's time that we take this over. These folks have been maintaining that road for a long time. Has a good base on it as well.
When Dick was out last summer, Mr. Berman came to see me and did the petition to dedicate the roadway. This roadway, the way it was written, and I think Donald Eney can explain it if I miss speed here, but we had to go back and it was, both owners were deceased and passed on, so we had to track one down in Graham, Texas, to get them to send a petition in to give up the dedication. And that's what we deal with, these roads that are 30 and 40 years old, is back then when they built roads, they said then, you had the roadway out in the center of the roadway. Since then, the laws have changed at the legislative level. That's why they're hamstrung. I've driven the road, there is no issue with the roadway. The only thing that's not going to fall in the way our roads are done today is a 60-foot rideaway. But, you know, I ran a little numbers and the taxes that were paid by the people that live up down those roads last year alone, or 2011, were $127,000. So it's not, I mean, it's a very viable piece. What was something confusing to me when Mr. Berman came in my office, was all the roads around it were accepted, but that one road was never accepted. Power Plant Road's been accepted, the roads right there, the... Exactly, so...
Does that fill that cemetery or not?
No, not the cemetery.
Not the cemetery, okay. No, the road right in front of Carter Road has been accepted too. Carter.
Carter, that's right.
Okay. Well, then I'll entertain a motion to approve dedicating this road to county acceptance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Rome, seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have Commissioner Dever voting nay on this, the rest in affirmative. Then the motion passed. Thank you very much. Next item is development compliance. Public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the replant of lots 113R, 114R, 115R, Block 1, Stony Creek.
Judge, the purpose of this replant is just to relocate the common lot lines between 113, 114, 115. The changes are very minute. Actually, on Lot 115, they moved it enough that they would have access off the change road. As it stood before, the only way they could get to the lot was to come on that cul-de-sac and go across the 60-foot granite pavement. The staff has reviewed this and it does follow our guidelines and the subdivision regulations, and we do make the recommendation that we approve this replant.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to discuss the replats of these lots at Stony Creek. Does anyone wish to make comments on this? Anyone? Okay, then a public hearing is now closed, and I'll entertain a motion to accept this replant.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
Discuss and take appropriate action on the final replats of Block 1 and 2, Block 1, Lux Branch Edition, 6420, Lux Branch Road, Granbury.
I don't think that's a replant, Judge.
No, sir, it's a final plant.
Final plant, okay.
Judge, this began to be a 13 and a half acre tract that wasn't flatted. It was described by Meeks and Bound and filed that way. The owner, back in municipal utility industry, has decided to sell approximately four acres to an individual, which that four acres will become Lot 2, and the remaining nine and a half acres will become Lot 1 that the owner will still retain. Staff has reviewed this final plan and has made comments and made them addressed. It does follow our regulations within the water quality of district, and staff does make recommendations to approve this final plan.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, on this final plan, Blocks 1 and 2, Block 1, Lux Branch, Branch Edition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, seconded by Commissioner Rome. Any further discussion on this? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action on a reappointment of Lloyd Barton, Block 2, out of Hood County Development Commission.
Nowhere but 13th, the Development Commission met to consider this reappointment of this expiring chair. Mr. Barton, which is in the audience, has freshly decided that he would serve another term if it so pleases the court. The Development Commission does make the recommendation that you reappoint Lloyd Barton for Place 2 in the Development Commission.
Judge, Mr. Barton served a while and would leave at a time when he needed help, so my motion would be to move for reappointment.
Okay. A motion made by Commissioner Rome. Who seconded?
I mean...
Commissioner Barry seconded. Any further discussion on this reappointment of Lloyd Barton for Place 2 in the Hood County Development Commission? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Lenny. Budget and finance, consider budget line item amendments for the period of December the 18th through January 6th, 2014.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. We have no budget amendments today.
Thank you, Stan.
Good job, Stan.
Okay, moving right along. Consider payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioner, the total of these bills for your consideration come up to $716,644.54. At the top you see that the attorneys appointed for representation comes to $21,943.85, and we've broken out the court board for those cases separately at $6,631. To Ben E. Keith Company for jail groceries, $22,159.26. To the city of Granbury for utilities, $31,371.2. To Charter Communications, $18,792.66. This is for telecommunications services, data transfer services. We have three items related to the Emergency Operations Center. To CDW Government, Inc., there's $82,493.95 for electronic equipment coming out of Fund 55. And then to McGee Architects LP, this is construction progress to the architect for both the Emergency Operations Center and the Animal Control Center. That's $49,905.90. And then to Modern Contractors, Inc., for construction progress on the EOC building, Then to Haynes and Moon LLP Attorneys, a payment of $16,645.39. This represents the county's share of what Haynes and Moon have dealt for representing the coalition for the Brazos River Authority permanent protest. Then to Somerville County, $15,998 for out-of-county inmate custody. To the Texas Association of Counties, $16,444.96 for unemployment premiums. And to U.S. National Bank Association, that's $31,511.98 for fuel card purchases on the Voyager fleet park system. I have provided a payment warrant for every item on the list. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about any of the items, but we do request your approval to pay these bills.
Motion to ratify payment.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Rome to ratify payment of the bills. Any further discussion on the bills? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Stan. Mr. Lenny, consider and take appropriate action on authorizing the county judge to sign agreement with the Mitel for fall equipment lease and service.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, I have two items on today's agenda. Both of these are concerning regarding the EOC and the progress there. Usually, we would try to address the EOC update meeting, but with the pace that we're moving on that site right now, we felt unnecessary to really bring it today so we could keep moving along and kind of stay a step with what's happening there. The first one that we have today is the Mitel lease. Earlier when we looked at the lease for Mitel and we were reviewing what we needed for the EOC, Stan and I were discussing then that it would be a good opportunity to look at the master lease that we have with Mitel, review that, and seek what would be involved in pretty much just reworking that master lease with the addition of equipment. I have Chris Moon here with me today, right beside me here, from Mitel, and Chris has been very kind to provide me with all the information and work with us on getting the information that we need for the EOC itself, as well as just reworking the overall lease the county has with Mitel equipment. Been looking at that, right now the county pays just a little over $7,000 in our lease with Mitel, and if we move forward and redo this lease with Mitel, the price will actually reduce by $300 a month and also include the addition of the equipment at the EOC, the installation, maintenance, and the software updates for the rest of the systems that we have here. So not only will they come in and bring the new equipment and help us set that up and get that ready to go, but as well, we will update the rest of the systems to match that system and update the voicemail system, and it also includes the maintenance and services there within that. So I appreciate Stan, you know, reminding me that it'd be a good opportunity to review that. With that, the county does get the lowest APR that is available for all of the units, so instead of these being separate pieces, if there are renewals, we get to put those all back together and we get the lowest APR for the county that is available.
So Jackie, all the phones that say air console at the EOC will be Mitel phones now, not like we have now?
That is correct. One of the issues that we have at the current EOC is that it is a quite old, north tail meridian system, and just getting people to work on that system now is problematic. This way, we put in the Mitel system, this is a system that the county maintains on a daily basis, and we're going to be able to work on that system, have extra phones available, bring phones in if there's an emergency and we need to bring extra phones in and add or take those out and service those. And I think that that alone is a really big thing for the county from the EOC standpoint.
So with that being said, you can forward your phone from your office if you're extending time in the EOC to your desk phone, or you're going to just touch the phone to the four digits to call somebody out of the EOC?
That is correct. One of the things that will help us immensely is that if you are in the EOC, as we were for days on end before, in early this year, you will be able to actually call just another extension in the county, and they will be able to get back in touch with you as well. This will also give us the opportunity to, you know, forward a phone from your desk so if somebody needs to pass a call to a commissioner from your office or from the sheriff, they'll be able to actually, you know, transfer a call to you, which would really help out an efficiency standpoint when we are there. I'll be glad to answer any questions or have Chris come up if there are any questions you have about this or any of the things we have. We've had a number of updates along the way with Mitel and our lease. Will we add equipment and add services to it? But for the most part, this is quite the same as what we had in the past. It's just a renewal and adding everything back together for...
Just for clarification, I don't think, I know yesterday you and the sheriff and the emergency management, I think Ray Wilson, dealt with the ring down line from Glen Rose to the power plant. That's nothing to do with that, or those phones will still be a different phone, is that correct?
Those, the ring down phones themselves, which are the old, you know, phones that we have there, are, those do belong to the plant, those lines belong to the plant, they are ultimately responsible, they're the only ones that can make additions or changes. But we did meet with them, as well as the other numbers that are in the EOC, Commissioner, those numbers that are posted on the wall, those numbers belong to the power plant as With adding the Mitel system into this, we gain the ability to utilize not only the other offices in the building from the technology center and sheriff and emergency management. If we add lines there, we can use those in the emergency center as well. One of the things that we ran into earlier in the year was that we did not have enough, especially outbound lines, there wasn't enough people that could call out simultaneously in that room. And as with the size of this room, if we have a number of people and they're trying to pick up and make an outbound call, that could really run into an issue. So with this system, we'll have additional lines available for outbound when we're there, and that will help us out with reliability, as we know whenever we get in a situation, everybody's trying to keep their cell phone charged.
Good. I'll entertain a motion to authorize county judge to sign this selective agreement.
You're going to be one and two together, though, you're going to do?
Right, right. Well, this would be, is that...
No, this is just...
This is A, Judge?
Yeah, just one.
Just one?
Just A.
Just A, okay.
I'll, so moved with one A, Judge.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Rome for this master lease. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, I and B. Now we can take both of those together, right?
We can do both of these together. Judge, this is regarding the service to the EOC. As you well know, once we get through a certain sequence at a new building, we have to bring in the services, all the different services, whether it's a utility of some type, and pretty much we consider services from phones and things like that as utilities now. AT&amp;T is bringing lines in for our faxes and things like that in the building. We also will need to transfer charter fiber into that area. So I met with Charter, we discussed two options, and that's what we ended up with at the end of the day. Those two options are, one is keeping all the current service that we have, just the way we have it, with no changes, and then just moving the fiber into that arena, which means they have to do some trenching, they have to pull through the conduits we have in the ground and get it installed and up. If we move that direction, the cost for all of the installation and equipment and the lines and everything is $24,000. We did budget during the EOC, you know, we set aside money for this, but in discussing some, you know, options, I was looking for options with Charter besides, you know, just what are other options? One of the other options that is available is that we're going to be adding lines into the EOC at some point, additional lines to carry additional load, another phone line, which we call that a PRI. And we have the opportunity that right now, that if we want to, we can add the PRI now and go ahead and add additional bandwidth, and what that does is that when we do that, of course, we're going to have service from Charter, you know, additional service with the PRI. And what they do is they bring the installation and those services, they will absorb that and will do that. If we move that direction and we add a PRI and update our bandwidth, then that installation price goes down to $2,600. The cost for the services throughout the year for the PRI and the bandwidth, and as well as the cable service in there to the EOC, would be $15,264. So it's $24,000 versus $17,000 total. And as I said, we're adding services as we move forward anyway. We have a lot of new things that have came online, even since January with attorney discovery. Dean and I were discussing a little while ago, the internet records access with the county clerk's office is very popular already. Tyler Spillman, of course, our appellate courts, whenever the submission's going through them at the state, as well as the different agencies that use the internet service from the county, our juvenile services and places there, that everything now uses the internet.
Are you saying an increase because of e-filing?
The e-filing and also the record access from the public and from other businesses and title companies is going to be one of our biggest two factors. People want to be able to access documents electronically automatically across the internet, as well as we have to also submit those across the internet more and more and more, which means that, you know, there's going to be a trade-off. Where we spend a little bit more in electronic filing, right now with electronic, you know, services, we will save probably in printing and toner, you know, cost of paper and toner and mail services and things of that nature. And there's just a lot of these that are actually coming down as a mandate. They will not accept a paper submission.
It is a mandate.
Yeah, Jackie, I'm not understanding all of what you discussed from a technical standpoint. What's happened to wireless in all this, all these cables and wire and stuff?
From a wireless standpoint, from, just to clarify, Commissioner, from a notebook and, you know, tablet perspective, is that what you're really looking at there?
Yeah.
A lot of the municipalities and counties, this is a big discussion item, for the most part, the majority of those, unless they can actually deploy a complete, secure wireless infrastructure, they wait until that time. Because if you kind of do it, you set yourself up for problems.
For a target situation?
Target situation or some kind of unauthorized access. And so most of the places that are deploying this are counties and municipalities that do go ahead and install a wireless infrastructure that is more along the lines of what you see in a hospital, for instance.
That was done for prison.
The same, it works the same. So it's a substantial deployment. I think that at some point, we're definitely need to be in that. We're getting close to that. Now, we are already having some equipment in place right now to help support that. So we're definitely moving down that road, and I see that coming pretty quickly in this building, as well as the EOC, Law Enforcement Center, you know, some of these places.
It's not a cheap change of work because, for example, Harris Hospital just announced they're going to be spending nearly $21 million just to put in the required several levels of privatization on a wireless basis for following the vomit here. There is a hospital a lot of the country that's been...
One of the things that really put us to a holding point was whenever we looked at the seizures or requirements, that for Tlets access and things, if it is a tax junior network and it's wireless, you have to meet certain criteria. And whenever you get to that point, that pretty much stops you and attracts until you can beat those requirements.
Their expenses at that point.
Do you have any questions? If I can clarify anything on that, Judge, I'd be glad to.
So what's your recommendation?
My recommendation from the technology department, we can be to go ahead and add that PRI and add that bandwidth now, because we're going to be adding it anyway, so we can either spend the $24,000 and not have any increase in services, or we spend the $3,000 and we increase the services, benefits all the offices, as well as the entire EOC and any extra access that we need there.
And save $5,000.
Save $5,000 in that process for the year.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve...
Is that option B or A, which one do you mean?
B.
In our package?
The first one is to actually select which one of those, Commissioner, so we have...
No, no, we have, when you credit out option A...
Oh, sorry.
Option, we learned option two that I'm asking there, because I was looking at the , I don't know what I wanted to...
The, I believe that that would be the, I'll have it listed here, is option A on my sheet, Steve, so which one are you looking at? I'll just make sure I'm looking if that will say any one.
Rome.
Yeah.
A is a separate issue, that's the Mitelses.
Yeah. This is B. See, this is B, number one. But under your options for charter, this is the one that the last page, which is, or page four, has the one-time cost of $2,599.
That's option two.
That's option two, then.
All right. That is option two. That is the one that is coming in from my presentation today.
What's the, is this a three-year contract, or do you, I mean, when I read through this, Jackie, yesterday afternoon late, is it one year, three year, or is it just perpetual?
No, we keep these, all of our contracts for those services fall under a five-year or six-month term. And the reason that we generally do those terms is that that's what most of the telecommunications companies are operating under now, primarily because construction costs are so high. To trench and to bore and to pull fiber and terminate is quite expensive, and we well know, working with AT&amp;T on that, that it's quite costly. So one of the ways that they offset that is they look at an ROI.
But the use agreement versus the install are two separate items, correct?
That is, it is correct.
And annual licenses.
That's right, that is an annual, you know, fee that we involve. That is an annual, you know, fee that we involve.
Right.
Judge, I just wanted to add a note that's under the number, A that we covered earlier with the MATEL requires no changes to budget. And, you know, since it actually costs less, we're already budgeted. There's nothing that has to change there. Under B for the Charter, if there is, you know, there could be, there could come up later in the year that we may need to make an amendment to that on that service if we're paying additional fees there out of my line of technology, which where we pay that from. We initially scheduled just to pay the transition fee out of, for the EOC project. But under this, it would be paid under my line of technology.
So it's already budgeted?
We have a budget for services from Charter already. But if we add this now, it could cause us to actually need to make an amendment later in the year or after the year.
All right, entertain a motion.
You recommended option two, right?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Rob. Any further discussion on this? All right, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding payment of travel mileage to JP for period of time when JP is on-call. This is yours, Jeff.
I talked with Danny Togel a little bit about this. They have one pool car that they share between the four JPs. And they're just, it's kind of a hassle with the exchange and to the cars. The car that we have right now is getting old and requiring repairs. And they're talking about maybe a new car or doing something where we pay them mileage while they're on-call only, so that we don't incur the cost of a vehicle or any maintenance or any insurance liability that we have. I ran the numbers out and looked at the information that Mr. Togel gave me. And they're doing about 600 miles a month. And if you amortize a $16,000 car over 48 months, you're looking at roughly a $330 payment. And they're only looking at 600 miles, you're looking at $300. And that would be our total expense related to our vehicle cost. I mean, we're already, we'll be paying that $330 plus at 20 cents a mile for gas. I mean, we're looking at another $120. So basically, it would be beneficial to the county if we paid them mileage on their own vehicle. They provided the insurance, all the maintenance, all the gasoline, so that we would not have to incur those costs.
We still incur liability.
And we still have liability related to duty, but we've not on the vehicles. The liability would fall under our rules that we have related to county business.
Well, I understand it, Jeff. They're not asking for any more money in the budget. They're willing to use the money that's in their travel budgets where it might cost the county any more money, right?
Is that right, Jackie?
Yes.
What do we do regarding the policy?
I don't think there is a policy on this.
Excellent. Yeah, we got a call. And I think in the process of conducting county business, employees may be required to travel locations within Hood County, but away from their normal duty station.
Does that include elected officials or just county employees?
I don't say nothing about elected officials.
You know, one of the things about this that I would say would differentiate this between the on-call and the regular duty pay is these are only to be utilized after hours on the times that they are on-call. And it's not compensation for any of the periods when they are not on-call.
So one week out of every month is just break out.
What did you say, Commissioner?
One week out of every month is where we apply each and every.
As long as we have a four-week month and seven months, you can get a five-week month. Sometimes you'll end up with two weeks that you'll be on-call for a five-week month.
Well, I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong. You got money budgeted for travel.
Yes, sir.
And you're not asking for any more money. No, if you run out of that money, you're on your own. You're on your own.
So last year, during budget, when we raised taxes, and I sit right here and raise taxes, and we asked everybody to cut their budget to the bottom, you're telling me they have surplus money in the travel budget today? Is that what you're telling me, Commissioner Dever?
You have to ask them, Commissioner.
You brought it up.
I don't know. You have to ask them if they're budgeting. I cherish, not mine's, their budget.
Shouldn't want to ask the question. You must know what that tells you.
Okay, what else you got? I think the policy really states that it's for out-of-county travel. Is that not right?
That's correct.
The policy is out-of-county.
So we got to change the policy? Is that what you're saying?
The next thing is if an official says county employees.
So you're going to pay Mary Burnett? You're going to pay Teresa McCoy? They have two locations to serve. And this is what tax law is required. They have two locations. I mean, if you don't go to a meeting that you're required to and to light front people, are you going to not pay yourself?
Now, one of the things about, this is on-call after their duty. I mean, I know that's part of their responsibility, but it's still in addition to their normal work. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. If you want to stay looking up there and answer any questions, y'all have those.
That's why we got a car, though, for them to swap out the car. I mean, I would revisit this during budget time, and I don't think it's fair. We have employees that are running checks around, mail around, doing other things. And we're in a time of need and we raise taxes on the taxpayers. I mean, a lot of these people knew what the salaries were when they took it. And now we're back at the podium again wanting more money. Say, we paid mileage about three years ago, and those bills started climbing into $200 a month for every JP, except one.
What'd y'all do to change the policy?
Get a car.
We're getting a car. Mister, I have to disagree with you on that because I can pull my reports and they very seldom ever got the $200 a month.
I've got the numbers in my office. We like to see them.
I have them in my office.
So do I.
I'll be glad to hear those from you.
Well, I've talked to Danny. And that car either's got, I mean, it's going to have to have something done to it. Because it's, we're going to have to, I believe, the heater doesn't work in it. And so it's going to have to have a heater cord replaced.
I'm not against looking at this if you're looking for all employees. But, you know, when we talked about this during budget, we brought it up during budget. We gave every employee a raise. We gave elected officials a raise. And we kept everybody's benefits the same for all 300-plus employees. So now we have a select few that want to be paid differently. I don't see how you can change that when it's already been posted in the Hood County news on public notice because a few years back, Mr. Rob wanted to take phone allowance and we couldn't change their salary line because they were elected officials. So statutorily, I'm not sure you can change it until next budget. That's a question for a county attorney.
Should we table this until we get an opinion from the attorney?
Well, I have a question for you, y'all. Prior to me being on here, Dick and I, along with his two serving on here, were the JPs and constables aren't raised at one time to offset this after the Cliff Moody era? Their salaries were brought up?
Never specifically to eliminate.
The mileage issue.
No, sir. No, it's incorrect. No, sir. That's incorrect. Judge Steens were removing off the length of officials.
Judge Steen what?
Judge Steens words were that she raised the salaries and let them off elected officials. Yes.
So what do you think that is? I mean, so a JP is making the same as a countywide elected official, such as the treasurer, district clerk, county clerk. I mean, I'm not opposed to revisit this, but it needs to be done during budget because I still don't think it's fair that you have county attorneys. County attorneys go out and the ACA, the Assistant County Attorney, go out to every JP's office and have to do a case Monday through Friday. I mean, the lowest-paying employees here are the ones that are also doing this and driving across the county and not being reimbursed.
We run files back and forth.
From your office?
Yeah, exactly. And the constable's been good enough to handle a lot of that. Precinct four constable. Is that better? Well, what do you want to table this? Is that your recommendation, Commissioner?
I would recommend table it, at least until we get an opinion from the county attorney.
All right, I entertain a motion to table. Motion made by Commissioner Tap, seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Dever. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. All right, item number three is consider take appropriate action on recording a request of the Texas Independence Day celebration. This is Commissioner, precinct four.
I believe Teresa Sims is here to mean that people weren't in your presentation.
Hello, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Teresa Sims. I work for the Texas Heroes Foundation, which is to support great for the Texas Independence Day celebration. And I'm not here to ask you for the money. Thank you for coming to talk to me. Two requests that we have. One is to close the parking around the interior of the square for the Texas Independence Day celebration, which will only start today, but it's being closed at 5:00 o'clock on Friday night, February 28th, through 7:00 PM, Sunday evening, March the 2nd. That's for the vendors to be set up around the square. And then the second thing that I need to ask you about, the picture that you have at the top of the page has the flags around the courthouse that we did last year. We placed 186 Texas flags around the courthouse. Each flag represented an offender that died in the Alamo. And the flags were on PNC pine, placed on rebar. We did have a county employee place the rebar for us so that it was safe along the lines of water electrical lines. So that's what we're going to ask for working this year.
Okay, Commissioner, are you making the motion?
For A and B.
Yeah. Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Rob.
I might add, they provide us a lot more detail than many people do regarding the square and surrounding areas. This is on top of, Teresa, just to be clear, this is on top of already going through the city for your permit, correct?
Yes.
Your permit, paperwork for the city. And now you're just asking for us to close the square and allow you to put the 186 flags up two weeks prior. But I mean, you're not circumventing the policy of the local city, correct?
That's right. We're just submitting our application to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is discuss and approve the reprogramming and narrowbanding of mobile portable. This is Constable, precinct four.
Judge, Commissioners, this is dealing with Homeland Security grant. We bought some P-25 compliant radios. These radios, as recently as this past, I'll give this to you real quick. We found out that recently, this past summer, the end of the summer, I had a UHF radio, the Cityman, needed repair. Went to DFW Communications where we purchased these radios. And thus, we were made aware that these radios had not been narrowbanded. SEC mandated, and we have, or mandated in the United States, that all radios operating on these frequencies be narrowbanded by January 2013. So what we're trying to do is get those reprogrammed and done in accordance with that. At the same time, underneath the Texas statewide interoperability plan that came out in January 2013, we found out afterwards, the biggest thing that have helped a lot of communications for us during the tornadoes that we had is that we don't have the new statewide interoperability channels programmed into these radios. There are 17 channels on the county side. And I believe there's nine, seven or nine channels on the high-band side. These are channels that allow us to talk when these other agencies came in to Texas Task Force One, Dallas Fire and Rescue and all them. These are statewide channels. And what the names of these channels have all changed from what they were previously. And the state has added more channels. The state of Texas has added repeaters across the state for this interoperability. So what we're trying to do is get those reprogrammed to meet that criteria, that if we ever have an incident again, and of course, you know, the problem is we have a nuclear power plant. Interoperability is a big, big push for us as a county as a whole. Just bring us in compliance with that, get those things done, and bring those up to speed. The company, the Solus, the radios, had given us a bid to reprogram all of the radios. And we have 12 handhelds and I believe seven mobile units. And that was at a cost of $1,735. When we found out about this, that this needed to be accomplished, each agency was notified, which was precinct four constable, precinct two constable, the district attorney's office, and the fire marshal's office. A reason that nobody else is involved is at the time that we bought these in 2009, we just had two constables and the fire marshal and the DA's office that were involved in this grant that was written by the county. And we were having a hard time figuring out how we were going to pay for this and how we were going to pay the $1,700. Because a lot of us had to cut our budgets back. And how are we going to do this? There are fees that were figured into this, factors for making the programming lips. When they normally charge $250 to make the lips, they're charging us $175. When they normally charge $80 to $100 per radio to reprogram these, they're charging us $50 a radio. So it was a minimal cost. And I wanted to bring it to y'all to discuss how we're going to do that. Since that time, as of late, as of Friday, got an email from the sheriff saying that he had ordered software from Motorola to take care of this. So I can't speak to that specifically. I think that's the sheriff's place to speak to that. And if it will save us the money and they have the capabilities of that coming in, we had this on the agenda prior to that coming out. I'll let him speak to that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sheriff, do you want to address that?
I have ordered, we have paid for the licensed software for those radios, which should be here this week. And Pi will program all of those with the appropriate channels. So a lot cheaper than the $1,700. I'm trying to through Motorola Dever out of Oklahoma City.
So that's going to take care of all of CHS and those others?
We'll make sure they all get programmed as the software gets here.
All right, well, thank you very much, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Yeah, it becomes, okay, item five. This is consider take appropriate action regarding the modular homes to be placed at rental properties. What this is, and I'll let Commissioner Tap explain this, but it's some housing that was destroyed during a tornado, Commissioner.
Okay, there were seven, excuse me, mobile homes that were owned by people at the rental properties that were totally destroyed. What this is, is the Habitat for Humanity and all the Mission Greenberry United Way have all been kind of working to get, and these modular homes from Fort Hood moved up to replace those seven mobile homes that were damaged. Red Cross was involved with this originally. And on the 23rd, they backed out and said they were not going to be involved. and said that they were not going to be involved. Uh, where that shifted the onus onto the county is, at that point, only Hood County and the Red Cross had, had contracts with the federal government to receive these trailers. Uh, that, I had that meeting with, with the group this past week, and they are attempting to get a waiver to try to get the, those modular homes moved onto these people's properties. Uh, under the, under the federal guidelines, if we took those properties, those mobile homes or modular homes, we would have ownership of that property for 18 months, and we were not allowed to move those modular homes onto private property for private individuals to use, even as temporary housing. So that's why the, the local nonprofits have been working to try to get a waiver, but I have not heard back since Thursday if they have received that waiver or not. So they asked us to just place this item, to table this item until we know exactly what they can and cannot do.
So are you making that motion?
I'm making a motion to table it.
Second. So a motion made by Commissioner Ta, seconded by Commissioner Barry, to table this until we can get all of the details worked out on accepting these houses or these people. And this is really clear that we both have this, but any further discussion on this?
What do they expect to hear, Jeff?
You know, they were talking about it could be as quick as 24 hours, or it could take us up to six months. They were trying to move as, as quickly as possible on the waiver, so they had non-contact issues, are we able to?
In conversations, Jeff, one of Jeff's, uh, said that he, you know, if the county could buy these lots, then we could actually move them on there. And I, you know, but then, then we gotta go through all kinds of processes on, you know, with the title company and all of that. But I was suggesting that what if we leased those, and we could put, put them on leased property for 18 months and then back out? But we're investigating all that.
We could write that, or we could cancel it.
Exactly.
Now, one of the issues was, there is a lien on one or two of those properties, which kind of clouded our ability to purchase the property.
Purchase, but maybe not lease it.
It's maybe not.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
All right, well, they have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Who's, who, who's to talk, doing the follow-up on this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, heard well.
Well, and Bobby. Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consider to take appropriate action on approval, uh, uh, of a 555 request for the Tech County Attorney?
Good morning, each other, Commissioner, it's Deanna Donat on the Hood County Attorney's Office. Uh, Ms. Casper's in trial this morning. You may be aware that effective January 1st of 2014, the legislature enacted the Michael Martin Act, which directly affects a prosecutor's discovery to defendants. Uh, we are now required to produce and, and document and prove to the court, um, everything that we have produced for the defense out of our files. So what we have asked for is equipment which I T has recommended to Ms. Casper, and that consists of a scanner that has, um, capabilities of, I think, it's 60 pages per minute duplex legal size, and then a P C station to actually support that scanner. The extra station we have in our office isn't capable of doing that. And the act allows for electronic production, and obviously that's gonna be a much more efficient way than running paper copies in our offices. And it'll be a more efficient use of our employees' time as well, so that is why we have requested this. The, the estimates come to a total of just under $2,500.
Twenty pounds?
Just under $2,500 for the, the actual P C station and the scanner itself.
Okay, is any, any, Commissioner, have any questions?
Okay.
I'm ready with the county attorney. If we went across the board and discussed our equipment and this item specifically, as well as, as we've updated the Net Data System and upgraded into the newest imaging system that they have, they, the county attorney's office has the ability to not only scan for this particular mandate that they have now, but to scan all of their items into that imaging system. Lori, agree with me that right now, let's get, let's move forward and get this taken care of so that they can meet this requirement, and then in the next cycle, budget cycle we're moving through, we wanna make sure that whatever needs, we need to take care of, that they can take full advantage of that system for Net Data, so that they can scan a lot from multiple stations, not just one station, uh, that they have there. But this covers this need, and will allow them to, to process these, and, uh, this goes hand in hand with the things that we discussed over the last couple of weeks with storage and, you know, storing these documents and that nature that, that we've been talking about.
I, I'm just amazed at the Texas Legislature, how they just keep on giving.
Another unfunded dent.
It is. It's exactly what it is.
Pass a law, and you worry about your own equipment.
I am not pleased.
I'm not either, but I don't think we have.
We don't have any choice.
Lori has to have.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Sooner.
Seconded by Commissioner Barry, motion made by Commissioner Ron. Any further, uh, discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. All right, consider. Did like they hear?
Yeah.
All right, consider to take appropriate action to review and approve the architectural agreement concerning the, why, uh, the recreation center will be run by the D Y M C A as requested by Todd Baker, who is approaching to the podium as we speak.
Good morning, Judge, and Commissioners. So, uh, I trust everyone got a copy of the?
Y'all got it.
Just note it's a draft, but, uh, the final copy, I figured if this were approved, without any changes, I would forward the final, for you to approve, but, uh, this is simply the architectural agreement for the architect that was selected prior by, through the process when they did the feasibility study for the county. Frankly Sergeant, um, reviewed the contract, it's, it's, it's in line with, with the scope of the work, um, based on the project budget, it's roughly a 6% architectural agreement. So, does anybody have any questions about it? Just wanted to make sure everybody understood this is just purely the architectural.
Did, did you send a copy of this to the county attorney also?
Um, I believe I did.
If not, uh, you know, what we'll have to do is get, get, get that by us when, when that time comes.
Okay. This is standard A I document, and, and essentially what this will do is, this will allow us, if we get them secured relatively quickly, to move forward with doing the rest of the things with purchasing, and, and it will post for the construction manager and be able to go forward.
Okay.
Just one question to read is, um, I will repeat again that I am not determining or who I wanna be accidentally identified as one. But, um, in the first section under Project Administrative Services?
Mm-hmm.
It says review and, and comments on contractor-provided cost estimate. I seem to wrote down them one. What are they, them one? Review and comments. What if they're over? What if they're grossly over, but?
Well, the, the onus is then on the architect and, and us to hit the budget within the budget. And that's, what, what we're gonna accomplish by this exercise is simply value engineering this project as we go, as opposed to, um, develop, having the architect develop a set of plans and put it out to a hard bid, and then it comes back and, and it's too high, and then we value engineer based on that. This is just gonna one expedite the project and hopefully save money in the, in the process. So all he'll do is, he, he, he'll base his decisions on, on, um, area-wise, the actual little costs that could go along with these similar projects. So he, he's basically providing us data in that, in that, that sense is all he's doing.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve based, uh, on the final approval of the county attorney.
Purchasing, probably.
And purchasing. Right, second.
Do you have the beat?
All right, motion made by Commissioner Ta, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Uh, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Todd. Reconvened, I know, convened into executive session for Texas Government Code 551.087.
Judge, I don't see, you see it?
Pardon?
I don't see Mr. Hurley here yet, so maybe they want to change it. Recede.
So, yeah, we're waiting on Sid?
Yes. Him or Karen? Uh, Deanna's here for Lori, but. You got yours?
Do what?
You see if I represent, that's the sort of answer.
No, I don't see anybody representing.
They're supposed to be here at the end of this, so we might give about five, five seconds for recess.
All right, we're gonna recess for five minutes, then we're going into the executive session. Oh, okay, we're, uh, uh, called back from recess, we're convened into regular session, and then now we're going to be convened into executive session, session for, uh, Government Code 551.087 for Economic Development, uh, to discuss the 381 agreement. Okay, we're reconvened into regular session, and, uh, we had a discussion in the, uh, an executive session, uh, according to Government Code 551.07, uh, 087 for Economic Development to consider amendment and/or a, a new, uh, agreement, 381 agreement with, uh, Vista on some new construction out in the Meander 377 area. And, uh, I believe that, uh, I will entertain a motion now that we will, uh, allow Vista to proceed to, uh, with the county's blessing, to investigate the 381, uh, 380 with the city, and then we will, uh, modify it for a 381 for the county. Is that not right?
So allow them to proceed if we're asked.
Yeah, allow them to proceed.
You don't have to cover any details, but you don't know which way it's gonna go.
So I'll entertain that motion, so. Motion made by Commissioner Ron to have a second.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Commissioner Ta. Uh, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank y'all very much. Meeting is adjourned. It is now 10:40.